We're on. Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting for July 24th, 2019. Again, this is a committee of the whole meeting. If you're tuning in, if you want to follow our agenda, you can tune into lavonia public schools dot org, highlight over the Board tab, and you'll see Agenda, and you can drop down and follow along with us this evening. We do have a number of items on here tonight. Hopefully, we'll be able to get through it relatively quickly. If you're tuning in to listen to discussion on items, this is the meeting that you do want to attend or watch because we will have greater discussion at this meeting than we will at most of the others. Most of these items have already been presented to the Board on at least one occasion, so we have a general idea of what they are, but tonight we'll get a little more in-depth. So, we will start with Audience Communications. Item one, I do not have any blue slips. I don't see anyone in the audience. We'll move immediately to item two, Committee of the Whole. And I have nothing. Do you have anything, Mrs. O'Quist?
I do not.
Then we'll move on to item three, our Finance Committee. Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes, sir. We have two items tonight. Item A is Mr. Francis. Excuse me. I'm sorry. We will be discussing milk money.
Something along those lines, yes. I am here to present the coming school year 2019-2020 dairy purchase for the Food and Nutrition Services Department, which is by default then for all of our schools. So, previously, the district had an agreement with Plymouth Canton Community School District, and we had bid this out three years ago as a combined or joint effort. And that contract, again, three years ago, has expired. So, at this time, we no longer are doing the joint effort with Plymouth Canton Schools. We went through a contract agreement, or I should say, a pre-bid pricing through contract pricing, through the organization, HPS. And the HPS is a purchasing organization which has the company Cedar Crest Dairy as the low bid. So, what you have in your packet is a couple of items here. One, you have the information from Cedar Crest on their terms, and you also have, through the purchasing system, HPS, you have their information with regard to the contract Cedar Crest has earned. And finally, you then, which goes along with that, Cedar Crest Dairy's pricing sheet. So, what we're proposing, or what we're asking for approval for the Food and Nutrition Services Department is to recommend and approve, if the Board puts it on the agenda for the regular meeting, Cedar Crest Dairy out of Hudsonville in a one-year contract for $148,800. And if you take note of some of the items on this price list, this doesn't mean that we would be ordering all of these items. This is simply their contract or unit pricing for dairy items. There's things from different types of milks and yogurts, et cetera. So, the supervisor of Food and Nutrition Services has written up a very brief recommendation, and she's the one that does the day-to-day ordering. And she has brought this forward to me, and I bring this forward to the Board.
Any questions? Crystal.
Just how are we doing? Do we know if we have very much waste? Are we doing well on our ordering and what we utilize? Or do you know how tight we are with waste and that sort of thing? Or she just orders as we need it when we run out?
Yes. So, the 148.8, I could nearly guarantee that at the end of the year, it may not be exactly 148.8 because that's the projected, it's somewhat similar to paper where we say, you know, this is the paper that we're going to order for the year, but if there are changes needed. Obviously, we wouldn't just stop getting dairy. We also wouldn't want to throw items away. And actually, previously, and it's written into this one as well, if they would take back items that were not, if they came in spoiled or not good for their cause, they do take those back. So, I can get the little more detail for you. I can talk to Pat and ask her how each month, maybe past history, sort of trying to give you how we would do in the future, of how much fluctuation she does with her ordering. But with all the food, we order that on an ongoing basis. We don't nail it in August and then roll with it.
Perfect. Thank you. Mrs. Bradford.
Is this pricing in line with what the previous year's pricing was as far as last year and everything?
Yes. In fact, in the letter, yeah. In fact, in the letter, they extended Cedar Crest, HPS extended them for another year. So, they clearly had the low pricing before, but we were three years ago and did our own bid because we did it in conjunction with Plymouth Canton. So, it was a larger order. And now that it's one district, it would be a smaller amount. So, we went with the contract pricing because we didn't have buying power like when we combined with two.
Okay.
Along those same lines, Mr. Francis, when you say it's one year as opposed to the three, and we didn't have the purchasing power, is there some reason why we couldn't go three years?
Through, we didn't bid it out as such. This is going through a pre-contract pricing. As you know, we had for a long time an agreement with Plymouth Canton Community Schools where we had a joint effort, and we even used their food service director on a partial basis through a contract and an agreement. We no longer are doing that with Plymouth Canton Community Schools. So, we, for one year at least, we can reevaluate going into the next school year. Do we put something together for long term, et cetera? So, we're just going to go, it's safer to just kind of get the one year.
The one year.
Yep. And then go from there as a comparison.
Okay.
Thanks.
I have one question, and it probably will be answered. Well, I guess I'm really putting you on the spot because our voting meeting's next. Do you know how much of that money we recoup selling them?
Oh, based on sales? I'd ask to defer over to Allison if she knows.
Well, I can say that our food service fund maintains the balance, so we do receive enough revenue to offset all of our food costs.
Okay.
So, between what we get reimbursed from the federal grants for free and what we charge for, like, all of Kurt Arlen, that covers our expenditure.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this will come out of the food service budget. This will not be general fund dollars.
Okay. Great.
And we'd like this placed on this evening's agenda.
Anything else? We're good? Okay. We're done with?
Regular agenda.
Regular for later. Yep. Thank you.
We're done with the dairy purchase, and now Mrs. Smith is going to help us with our annual tuition rate for non-residents.
Thank you. Just to add on to our last discussion about the milk purchase, we did compare it to what our previous bid award was and felt that the prices that we could get through this consortium were very reasonable. Otherwise, we would have gone out to bid to see what the district could have done. So, we feel comfortable bringing this before the Board tonight. Onto our next item, tuition rate. This is an item that comes before the Board every year. Michigan law, as well as Board policy, requires that we set a tuition rate for non-resident students. And as the Board knows, our district typically doesn't entertain non-resident students, but Board policy and the state law does allow for some exceptions. Specifically, like, if it was a upperclassman, for instance, that maybe have moved out of district, and they would like to finish out their senior year here in the district, that's something that is permissible under our Board policy. So, we follow a formula as prescribed by the state law. It's based on our previous year's operating cost, and we divide that by our pupil count to come up with an average cost per pupil, and that's what the tuition rate is. So, for 2019-20, the tuition rate is $10,713 based on that formula. This item is typically put on the consent agenda, so if that's something that you're comfortable with doing again, I'd request that we do that for our regular meeting tonight.
Questions?
Go ahead with that.
Okay. We're good? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, President Johnson concludes Finance.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. And it moves us to item four, Curriculum Committee, and our Chair, Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, the Curriculum Committee will hear from Mrs. O'Brien regarding recommendations for the iReady purchase.
Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. This evening, I am here to bring iReady, a recommendation to purchase iReady Diagnostic and Instructional Licenses. This is a yearly cost. We use it with kindergarten through eighth-grade students. We use the instructional licenses with targeted students, could be kindergarten through high school, based on their needs. It's an approved assessment by the State of Michigan as an initial determination of whether a student is at grade level. We've been using this at the elementary level since 2016 and at our middle school since last year, 2018. Students take this assessment three times a year. We use the results to support our students with achieving grade-level learning, and it identifies their strengths and weaknesses and allows teachers to differentiate instruction and provide Tier Two interventions. Additionally, the diagnostic also provides teachers with targeted lessons to support teachers with instructing students in their areas of weaknesses. So, in summary, we are recommending the purchase of iReady reading and math diagnostics for all K through eight students. If you noticed on our letter memo for this purchase, we got an additional discount. So, we had sent our quote in, and they provided us an additional discount this year at $4.80 per student license. It's normally $6. So, the diagnostic would be $79,056. The instructional licenses, we also got an additional discount on. So, we are purchasing 700 instructional licenses for targeted students, and that cost is $13,440. Six days of professional development to support our teachers with utilizing it for $9,000 for a total cost of $101,496. We will be using our Academic Services Department budget, 31A at-risk state grant, and then the Early Literacy Assessment reimbursement grant. For the past two years, the state has put a grant out that we've applied for and received additional funds that reimburses the purchases that you've put in place for K through three students to support their reading at third-grade law. So, when that grant, if that grant opens this fall, we'll be applying for that again.
Any questions?
Mrs. Frank.
How is it being utilized in the district? Are we using it to the fullest degree? I know that, like, you get a one-sheet summary as a parent, which is the score on it. Are the teachers going through, like, the multiple levels of diagnostics? Is it helping us achieve what we're asking it to help us, I guess? Are we utilizing it to the fullest extent?
So, I think every year, so this is, you know, we've had three full years at the elementary level, and every year, we've gotten better. Last summer, they updated the whole program and provided a new dashboard that, when a teacher logs in, all their students are right there on the front page, so they don't have to dig as deep how they are doing, so let's say, in reading, their overall reading, whether they're at grade level above or below, and then each area of reading that the diagnostic assesses them on. And then, we can dig deeper into each area, and one of the areas we really utilized in the lecture was for vocabulary. And so, teachers set targeted goals with vocabulary, used the iReady instructional license, or iReady lessons that come with the diagnostic, and then did some pre- and post-testing on that. Our coaches did a lot of support with that use of iReady.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? President Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. O'Brien, does the diagnostic itself dictate that it be tested three times a year, or is that something we do? That's a diagnostic?
The diagnostic is meant to be given three times a year, and the state requires that students are tested three times a year in reading. So, it fits hand in glove. That's why it's one of the approved state assessments. We need to be testing our students at the beginning, in the middle, and at the end of the year.
And they recently extended that up through middle school, which is why we started that last year.
Okay. And how long does it take to administer the test?
So, the younger they are, it could take longer, depending on their skills with a computer. But it averages two 45-minute, 40 to 45-minute class periods for reading and two for math.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Voting tonight?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you.
President Johnson, that will be the Curriculum Committee report for the evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. That'll take us to Policy Committee, and our Chair, Mrs. Burton is not here. Would you like to cover this, Mrs. Bonnefield?
I can cover this. We have tonight one item for Board policy. We're going to look at JGI, and Mrs. Terrell is going to help us out with that.
Good evening. As you know, policy JGI, suspected abuse and neglect, was recently updated in March of 2016. It outlines our district policy and procedure for reporting child abuse and neglect to the Department of Health and Human Services, Child Protective Services, and Adult Protective Services. Recently, the Department of Education and the Wayne County Health and Human Services Department worked together to develop an online reporting site for child abuse and neglect. The online site eliminates the need to make a phone call or file a 3200 form. The online site keeps track of the history of the report and the status of the report. This online reporting is only for Child Protective Service referrals, not for Adult Protective Services. Mandated staff will have the option to report any instances of child abuse or neglect by calling the intake line or reporting online. Staff will be presented with this updated information at our mandatory meetings regarding abuse and neglect at the beginning of the school year. So, I would recommend that this policy revision be placed on the regular Board meeting agenda for first reading, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
You're the Chair.
Oh, yes. Does anybody have any questions? Other than me?
You do.
Um, geez Louise. So, if we use the oral report method, we have to report within 72 hours, and then, but now we're adding the online, and the same, when I read it, I got a little confused. Can you help me with the requirements when we're reporting? The difference between online and?
Online reporting serves two functions. So, it serves as the oral report, so it's an online report, and it also serves as a 3200 form, which is the actual report.
Okay.
So, if you were doing an online report, you will log in, you will list all of the same information that you would be giving to the intake via phone call.
Ah.
And if you do it via phone call, you are required within 72 hours to fill out a 3200 form.
Then to file the 3200 form.
Correct.
Otherwise, it's immediate reporting.
This is what you're already doing.
No matter what, it's immediate reporting.
Okay. Okay. I got it. All right. I was, just when I was reading it, I kind of got lost on it. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much. That's very helpful. Okay. So, we will put that on the agenda to vote on that tonight?
No.
First reading. Oh, first reading. Yeah. All right. That's it for Policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. That'll take us to item six, Legislative Committee, and Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, we have one item on the agenda. It is going to be presented by Superintendent O'Quist, and it is the LPS Operating Milage and Sinking Fund Proposals for the August 6th election.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes for our community as a reminder that we do have two important proposals that will be on the ballot before our community on August 6th. In the very near future, our families and staff will be receiving another email information update with a copy of the video presentation that we utilized last week at the community meeting. So, we appreciate those who were able to attend one of the community information meetings that we held. The one most recently was held last Wednesday. We did videotape that presentation, and so that will be sent out to all staff, all families, and it is also available on our website, along with an FAQ, an article, multiple articles about the milage and the informational brochure. So, if any member of our community would like information, they are certainly, first and foremost, welcome to contact me via phone, via email, or to make a time to come and visit. In addition to that, we do have quite a bit of information available on the website, including that video presentation, which is the PowerPoint presentation which we've shared with our community.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. That concludes Legislative Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. That'll take us to item seven, Personnel Committee, and Mrs. Frank.
Thank you. And just to tag on to that, I think that your staff did a great job on that presentation talking about why our district is looking for the money, why we are looking for the increase, although it's a very minimal increase, what the changes are to the policy and why we went for a tenure. So, I think it was a great idea to do. I hope that, like you said, everyone gets out to view the information that we have out there and then comes out to vote.
Yes.
Because it's really, really important to the district. So, thanks so much for doing that. And now, we're going to talk about Mrs. O'Quist's contract, and I think you're going to lead the discussion, President Johnson.
I am. Thank you. Everyone who had received a copy of the employment contract, and this is the time of the third year that we need to review it. As you can see, it's a, what we call, a three-year rolling contract. This contract will run from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th of 2022. I met with Bill Weber, our consultant, to go over the provisions to make sure that Mrs. O'Quist's contract is within keeping with general superintendent contracts. I'll just briefly indicate that in terms of her increases, the contract calls for a 2% increase in the first year and then 1% in the second and the third year. In addition, there are increases of 1% and then 1%, is it 1% after that for each of the two years after, in terms of the annuity?
1% the first year and 1% the third year.
The third year. Okay. Those essentially are the only changes to the contract. We had an opportunity to go over that a little bit earlier. Does anybody have any questions, comments at this point? Mr. Centers.
I just want to say that, you know, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for doing the legwork to determine the appropriate levels as far as what the market is for superintendents. These increases are similar in percentage-wise to whatever other employee groups have received. And clearly, like a lot of our employee groups, Mrs. O'Quist is doing an excellent job in her current position. So, just want to say, you know, thank you for doing such a great job, and we are honored that you'll continue to serve as superintendent.
Thank you.
Yes. Actually, it's Mrs. Frank.
Oh, yes. Oh, sorry. Oh, Mrs. Frank. Sorry. I just wanted to thank you again, Mr. Johnson, or President Johnson, for going the extra step and talking with Mr. Weber as an outside resource and just a great sounding board to make sure that we have great advice and opinions that, again, match what our local...
Yes.
I'm losing my words. But thank you for going to an outside source and making sure that you got the advice. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. I will say that Mr. Weber is really the guru in this area. He has his finger on the pulse. He knows what needs to be in these contracts, and so we rely heavily upon his information, his opinion in putting these together. And obviously, we want to make sure that our superintendent is appropriately compensated for the hours and hours and hours of work that she puts in over and above. She is everywhere. You are omnipresent. It's amazing. You can walk into a school, and the smallest of children and the tallest of children all know who you are, almost on a first-name basis. So, that's something that's invaluable to our district. So, I thank you for that.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything? Okay. Other comments? Okay.
And we're voting on that tonight?
Yes.
Correct.
Personnel. President Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. That will take us to item eight, Building in Sight. Mr. Centers.
I have nothing this evening.
We do not.
Basically, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Centers.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our agenda, the Committee of the Whole. So, we will take a short break, and we're going to be back shortly for our organizational meeting. Thank you. Good evening. We're back again. And this is our organizational meeting for July 24th, 2019. This is the meeting where we essentially set our meeting dates and some other housekeeping matters for the year. Hopefully, it'll be a relatively short meeting. And Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mrs. Burton is absent. Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is present, and President Johnson.
Here. We do have a quorum.
And Chris, just to...
Chris, are you here? Here.
Thanks, great.
We do have a quorum. That'll take us to item two, Audience Communication. I do not have any blue slips. I do not see anyone in the audience approaching. So, that'll take us to item three, Adoption of the 2019-2020 Bylaws to Establish Meeting Dates and Other Procedures. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached bylaws to establish 2019-2020 meeting dates, procedures for the calling and posting of Board meetings, and authorization to sign contracts and legal documents for the Board. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Frank. Are there anything that you need to add, Mrs. O'Quist?
No. The schedule of meetings is attached, and it has been shared with the Board multiple times this spring, and so we will proceed with that schedule upon voting on that this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Quist. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Did we have Mrs. support?
We have Mrs. Frank supporting. We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Frank.
Sorry, that's what I got.
For the adoption of the 2019-20 bylaws.
So, Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton? Oh, sorry. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That takes us to item four, Designation of 2019-2020 Bank Depositories. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution designating JP Morgan Chase Bank, Bank of America, Fifth Third Bank, and Michigan Liquid Asset Fund Plus as depositories for the school district during the 2019-20 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And Mrs. Smith, are you going to help us with this?
I will. Thank you, President Johnson. There is no change in bank depositories from last year. We're continuing with the same relationships we have this year. Everything continues to go well, and we're pleased with the relationship, so recommend continuing on. Included in the backup is a distinction of what each account is used for. If you do have any questions, you're very welcome to reach out to me. I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions, comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the designation of the 2019-2020 bank depositories. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That takes us to item five, Appointment of Investment Officer. May I have a motion, please? May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District appoint the treasurer, Ms. Allison Smith, as the investment officer in conjunction with the district's investment policy for the 2019-2020 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. O'Quist?
Yes, the investment officer is responsible for overseeing the day-to-day management of the district's investments. Ms. Smith would be responsible for transferring the appropriate funds to effect investment transactions, for the investment of operating funds, operating reserve funds, and bond proceeds, consistency with the policy and actions of our Board of Education.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Quist. Any questions or comments from the board? I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. We appreciate it. So we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for establishment of investment officer. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us to item six, appointment of staff member to be in charge of elections. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District acknowledge the appointment of Philip Francis as a staff member in charge of school elections for the 2019-2020 school year. This appointment is made by the Board Secretary with formal acknowledgment by the Board of Education.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. O'Quist?
Thank you. Although this does not require a formal vote by the entire board, it does require approval of the Secretary of the Board of Education. Traditionally, the Director of Operations or the person with those responsibilities is also the person that has been designated to be in charge of elections. In this case, that would be Mr. Francis. So with Mrs. Bonnefield's approval, we'd like to move forward with that for next year.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Quist. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers, for the appointment of a staff member to be in charge of elections. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to item seven, appointment of staff member to be responsible for posting board meeting notices. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District acknowledge the appointment of a superintendent as the administrator in charge of posting meeting notices. This appointment is made by the Board Secretary with formal acknowledgment by the Board of Education.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. O'Quist?
Yes, this process designates the superintendent as responsible for posting meeting notices per the bylaws and the policies of the board as well as state, in accordance with state guidelines and law. That responsibility is generally designated to the executive assistant to the Board of Education and to the superintendent, Mrs. Jill Wozniak.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Quist. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the appointment of staff member to be responsible for posting board meeting notes. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, the motion carries. We have come to the end of our agenda for the organizational meeting. Is there any other business to be brought at this particular meeting? Seeing none, then we are adjourned. Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education for July 24th, 2019. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Here.
Mrs. Burton is not present. Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is present, and President Johnson?
Here. We have a quorum, thank you. And that'll take us to item two, our pledge. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you lead us tonight?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield, and welcome to everyone who's here tonight. And we're in a little different configuration for our regular meeting. We're just not quite ready to, as you can see, we've done some renovations down here. It's much brighter. We have a lot better lighting. The board table isn't quite ready yet, so we had a number of meetings earlier, so we're just going to stay in this configuration for this meeting. For any of you who want to follow along with the agenda, we have them out on the table to the right of the entry door. For those of you at home who want to follow along, you can go to our website, livonypublicschools.org, highlight over the board tab, and you can drop down to agendas and follow us along. We just had a meeting, a committee of the whole meeting, where we discussed some of the items that are going to be on the agenda tonight. It's not a very long agenda, but we do have some very exciting things to bring forward to you. And as has been customary since I've been president, I do like to read our district climate goal that I think is extremely important, and it reads that all students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment where both students and adults respect and value one another. We, as the board, find that to be one of the most important things that we can do. And what does that really look like? What does the respect look like? And it's between not only student to student, but student to adult and adult to adult. And we, as a board, we don't always agree on the items that come before us, but we have respectful discussion, we respect each other's position, and we ultimately come to a consensus, which we call compromise, that has been lost in our society nowadays. The best thing that we can do is set an example for our children to follow, and we feel that we are the ones that have to set that example. And we try and do that every meeting that we have. So I like to start out our meetings with that note. So we'll move on to item three, communications, and we'll start with our update from our superintendent, Mrs. O'Quist.
Thank you. I'd like to just mention the change in agenda order. It's a point of privilege.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
For those looking at the agenda, we added an item H to the agenda, and we're going to make some adjustments and move the items that are on the agenda as items F, G, and H. We are going to move those right after, this is under personnel matters. We're going to do that, move those up under item A. So it will be item A, and then we will do F, G, and H, and then move down to B, for those who are watching, just so that you can follow along. It may be a little bit confusing, but you'll see as we go along.
Thank you, President Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Quist, for reminding me.
So my update will be a little bit more brief, because as you know, school is not in session, but that does not mean there is still quite a bit going on throughout the district. But I'd like to share congratulations with two of our recent Franklin High School graduates, Kristiana Benson and Caitlin Miller, who finished in the top 10 of all qualifiers, earning a fourth-place finish at the Health Occupation Students of America International Conference. You may recall that they made it through regionals, made it through states, and became international competitors. They went to Florida in mid to late June and earned a fourth-place finish amongst all of the competitors in their field. So we are extraordinarily proud of their efforts. You may recall that they were active throughout the year in spreading their message about the importance of a balanced diet between October and April. They presented at five elementary schools, one middle school, a high school, and a Girl Scout troop, as well as a presentation for the community at the Livonia Civic Center Library. Throughout their presentations, they used a number of activities and assessments to keep the students engaged. So we congratulate recent grads, Kristiana and Caitlin, on their exceptional honor. We have our sinking funds. As the board knows, our sinking fund project's going full steam ahead throughout the district. We have recently shared some updates on the Franklin and Stevenson Field renovations, which are going very, very well. The turf is complete, and much of the track has been completed. We're now working on the asphalt, the paving around that area, and the fencing, and then move on to the baseball and softball field. So they look outstanding. We continue our pavement projects throughout the district. They're at varying stages of completion, but they will certainly be done well in advance of students and staff returning. We have our roof project at Johnson. It's on target and moving right along. They're over half-done with that project, and a much-needed renovation that we're pleased the sinking fund is able to allow us to do. This summer, some may think that summertime means our staff is off, so to speak, and I wanted to share with you a shout-out to all of our staff involved in professional development throughout the summer. We have a number of staff across the district in many roles attending professional development throughout the summer. I'd like to give an acknowledgement to our 10 staff members who are involved in Project Lead the Way training. As you know, we're going to have some new STEM offerings for our secondary students at the middle school and the high school level this coming year. We're utilizing Project Lead the Way for that, and it takes a considerable investment in professional development before a teacher can begin utilizing that program. So we had five teachers who went out of town and took time out of their summer and away from their family for a five-day training, and we have an additional five teachers that are going through a two-week training. They will be bringing that work back to establish, again, the new Project Lead the Way classes at the secondary level, and we are thrilled to get those underway for our students this fall. The past couple of days, Mrs. O'Brien and I have had the pleasure of visiting Camp Emerson and Camp Frost, and we are so impressed with the hard work of our students and our dedicated staff who are participating in this program. As you know, each fall, Mrs. O'Brien, in the Academic Services Department, shares an update with you on the work of Camp Emerson and Camp Frost, which is funded through our Title I funds. We have students participating over a four-week period. Mrs. Sarah Rollins is leading the work at Camp Frost, and Mr. Colling at Camp Emerson. We have a number of teaching staff, paraprofessional staff, and student volunteers who are all giving of their time to work at Camp Emerson and Camp Frost this summer. So great things going on, continued learning to help stem that tide of summer learning loss, and we look forward to sharing with you more information in the fall when Mrs. O'Brien shares her update. And again, I do not want to forget to remind the community that pretty soon it will be bounce-back-to-school time, so we are going to hold our annual event at Riley Upper Elementary on August 20th, and we will have shuttles again this year, but they will not be from central office. They will be coming from Roosevelt Elementary, which is just down the road from Riley, so it'll be a quick shuttle ride. We'll have two buses going continuously from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. that evening, and we certainly hope our families and, most importantly, our students will be joining us for that. Thank you, President Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Quist. I do want to just make a note that after the, and again, we have a little bit of an adjustment on the agenda, the first four items under personnel matters, we will be taking a short recess. So we'll go to item 3B, written communications. I don't have any written communications, any written. Seeing none, we'll move to item C, 3C, audience communication. I do not have any blue slips. I don't see anyone rushing to the podium with a blue slip. So we'll move on to item 3D, response to prior audience communication. Is there any response to prior? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, our consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, meetings of the special meeting of June 17th, 2019. 5B, meetings of the closed session of June 17th, 2019. 5C, minutes of the public hearing of June 17th, 2019. 5D, minutes of the regular meeting of June 17th, 2019. 7A, approval of 2019-2020 tuition rate.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. O'Quist, anything to add?
Would you not?
Did 7A and 7B get in there?
The tuition rate?
Agreement to...
Yes.
No, the question...
That is not on the agenda this evening?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And yes, the tuition rate was included. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to accept the consent agenda. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
That will then take us to item six, instructional matters. And our item here is approval of iReady diagnostic purchase. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to purchase iReady diagnostic assessments for math and reading for use at the elementary and secondary levels from curriculum associates for $79,056, iReady reading and math instruction for $13,440, and six days of professional development for $9,000. The total cost to purchase the diagnostic licenses, iReady reading instruction, and professional development is $101,496. This total reflects a discount savings of $23,124.
Good evening. Thank you, President Johnson. On this evening, we are recommending the purchase of iReady diagnostic for all of our kindergarten through eighth-grade students. iReady instructional licenses in both reading and math for targeted students. This is a yearly purchase that we have been using at our elementary schools since 2016 and in our middle schools since 2018. The results provide us with diagnostic information for each student that we utilize to identify their areas of strengths and their areas of weakness. Additionally, the diagnostic also provides teachers with targeted lessons to fill in gaps and strengthen those areas of weaknesses. Lastly, we would like to provide staff with professional development on utilizing the data to support student achievement of the standards. So in summary, we're recommending the purchase of the iReady reading and math diagnostic assessment for all kindergarten through eighth-grade students, instructional licenses for targeted students, and six days of professional development.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the approval of the iReady assessment purchase. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you.
That will then take us to Item 7, business matters, and 7B, approval of 2019-2020 school dairy purchase. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of milk and dairy supplies from Cedar Press Dairy Incorporated, Hudsonville, Michigan, in the amount of $148,800.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. And good evening, Mr. Francis.
President Johnson, how you doing?
Good.
The item before the board is a one-year contract for dairy obtained through extortion bid pricing via HPS Group Purchasing Organization. This will replace the contract for dairy that ended in June of 2019, and the total amount that is in front of you is $148,800. We're recommending the milk and dairy purchase for the board, and I wanted to jump in and answer a question that was asked during the committee with regard to how we're doing with regard to waste and overall in the department with regard to not just dairy, but food items, and shows our staff is always paying attention, because I sent an email expecting to get an answer tomorrow, and I got one right away. And the supervisor of Food and Nutrition Department stated that they have a few items. First of all, she stated that we're doing very well, because we have a rotational program with regard to our items which helps reduce waste. We have a good production record-keeping by the kitchen managers and the kitchen staff at each of the buildings. So she's very pleased at the way that they're the minimal amount of waste that we have had throughout the past year. So just to answer that question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? And just, I think you pointed out at the committee meeting, the price for this may or may not be what we end up paying. Is that right?
This is what we are asking for approval amount of, but if we underorder, then that's okay. If we have to overorder, much like we had an incident with the paper this past year, we may have to come back and ask for an additional approved amount. And another item I'd like to mention, this comes from the Food and Nutrition Budget. This is not a general fund budget item, but it is directly from the Food Services Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers, for the approval of the 2019-2020 school dairy purchase. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Thanks.
That will take us to Item 8, our Personnel Matters, and our first item is A, approval of the collective bargaining agreement between Livonia Public Schools and the Livonia Secretarial Association, LSA. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District enter into a three-year agreement with the Livonia Secretarial Association, which agreement has been ratified by LSA members. Said contract is to commence July 24, 2019, and expire June 30, 2022.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers. Good evening, Mr. Archibald.
Good evening, Mr. Johnson. Just one brief remark. I again want to reiterate what an honor it is for me to represent the board and the superintendent through the bargaining process and to commend both bargaining teams, the LSA and the board team, exhibiting the utmost professionalism and collaborative spirit at the table, and we are absolutely delighted to bring this to you for your approval this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers, for the approval of the collective bargaining agreement between Livonia Public Schools School District and the Livonia Secretarial Association, LSA. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Mrs. Oquist?
We will invite members of the team to come up and sign once we take our brief break after the next appointment items.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. And because we have a revised agenda, the next item is going to be Item 8F, appointment of K-6 elementary coordinator. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Jennifer Corey as the elementary coordinator for grades kindergarten through six in the Academic Services Department beginning August 5, 2019.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. And Mr. Archibald?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Again, I'll get it started with some brief background regarding Jen, and then turn it over to the superintendent. With respect to her education, Jen Corey has a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education from Eastern Michigan University, a Master of Arts in Reading from Oakland University, approximately 26 years' experience in education, 24 of those years with the Hazel Park Public Schools as a classroom teacher, a Title I teacher, and a literacy coach. We had the privilege of stealing Jen away from Hazel Park in the fall of 2017, and she has been a literacy coach here for the last two years, and during those two years has really established herself as a go-to person in the district and will be an excellent addition. She's already in the Academic Services Department, but in this new capacity as the K-6 elementary coordinator.
Thank you. As you know, President Johnson and our board colleagues, we had brought to the board a recommendation to do some restructuring within our Academic Services Department in order to better meet the needs of the staff that we serve, and ultimately benefiting the student achievement and each of our learners in our classrooms. So we are very excited to bring forward two pieces of that model this evening. As you know, we are moving forward with a K-6 elementary coordinator for all subjects, a 712 for math and science, and a 712 for ELA and social studies. And so with that opportunity, we had the chance to speak at length with Mrs. Corey regarding her vision for moving us forward in this area, and again, her work most recently with us as a literacy coach, in addition to her extensive background as a classroom teacher, as a curriculum developer, and in her professional development role with adult learners. We feel she is the ideal person to continue moving us forward in this important work. Mrs. Corey is also a member of our current Galileo cohort. As you know, an exceptional teacher-leader academy. She is at the precipice of that work, along with three of our LPS colleagues, and is also involved in advanced degree work at Oakland University in educational leadership as well. We are very excited to bring her name forward to you, recommended for the K-6 elementary coordinator.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, for the appointment of K-6 elementary coordinator. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Johnson, and members of the board. Thank you, Superintendent Oquist. It is such a pleasure to be here, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve in this new role. I'd like to, if I can, introduce my family.
Absolutely.
Stand up. This is my husband, Rob. And this is my daughter, Olivia. She just graduated from Stevenson this year, and she's off to Michigan State in the fall.
Great.
And this is my son, Alex. He is a junior at Churchill High School.
Excellent. Thank you for being here today.
So I have been honored these last two years to serve as literacy coach, and I am so looking forward to just rolling up my sleeves and digging into the new challenges ahead. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. On your menu, we are now going to...
Name of the slides for you.
The, yes, we're going to go to, what is it? Item G on the agenda, appointment of 712 math-science coordinator. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Rebecca Caldwell as the math-science coordinator for grades seven through 12 in the Academic Services Department, beginning August 5, 2019.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Hi, Mr. Archibald.
Mr. Johnson, good to see you.
It's been a while.
It has. Delighted to share a little bit of information about Rebecca with you. She holds a Bachelor of Science in Chemistry from the University of Michigan Dearborn, a Master of Science in Chemistry from Purdue University, a Master of Science in Educational Leadership from Concordia University, and currently working on her doctorate in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from Wayne State University. Rebecca holds teaching certificates in both mathematics and chemistry. She has over 18 years' experience teaching mathematics and chemistry with Trenton Public Schools. Her most recent experience includes being a research assistant at Wayne State University, university field supervisor, supervising student teachers through Grand Valley State University, and a lecturer and practicum advisor at U of M Dearborn. She currently works, until at least in a couple minutes, with Unetrix, which is a school data specialist company. We are absolutely delighted, while she impresses us on paper, even more so in person, and extremely excited at her joining the Academic Services Department and to get working in this new role. I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. So we, for both of these positions, had the opportunity to review the credentials packets for many exceptional candidates, as well as go through a rigorous interview process led by Mrs. O'Brien. I'd like to thank all of the members of the team from screening through the interview processes, and I will say that Mrs. Caldwell, throughout that process, stood tall throughout each interview piece and impressed the folks on each of those teams for not only her strong credentials, her knowledge of the adult learner, her depth of understanding of both content areas, mathematics and science, her experience as an educator, as well as a university supervisor and lecturer. So the combination of those, in addition to her engaging personality, we believe will be just the right person to fill the role, to work directly with our staff, and to support our teachers in their efforts in the areas of math and science, and also be a strong contributor to our Academic Services Department. We are very excited to recommend to you that we bring her into Livonia Public Schools and part of that, an integral part of that team.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the appointment of a 712 math and science coordinator. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for all those kind words. That was so nice. It's my pleasure to be here tonight before the board and to accept this position. I can't wait to work with this team. Every step of the interview process just let me know that this is a group that's really supporting students and staff, and I really look forward to being a part of it. So thank you for this opportunity. My husband, Mark, and my two children, Mitchell and Claire, came with me tonight to support me, so thank you. They're really awesome. And I look forward to getting to work as soon as possible, so thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Excited to have you on board.
Our next item is going to be 8H, appointment of elementary principal. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Shannon Wheeler as an elementary principal at Johnson Upper Elementary School, beginning on August 12, 2019.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bradford and Mrs. Oquist. Or is it going to be Mr. Archibald?
I'll start it off. We're on a roll, Mr. Johnson. Shannon is no stranger to us, but I'll give you a little bit of her background. A Bachelor of Science from Madonna University, a Master of Secondary Science in Education from the University of Michigan Dearborn, and an education specialist in leadership from Oakland University. Shannon has been with the district for over 18 years, teaching at both Churchill and Franklin. She was also a department chairperson in science at Franklin High School, and for the past four years has been an assistant principal at Frost Middle School. And Shannon, as you know, is a very energetic, enthusiastic, and competent leader. She has done tremendous work in the Frost community and is absolutely elated, as we are at this opportunity for her to continue to serve that triad in the Johnson community in this new capacity as principal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald.
We are very eager to bring forward to the recommendation from Mrs. Wheeler to become the principal at Johnson Elementary School. Johnson is a very special place for students to learn and grow with a dedicated staff that cares deeply about the students and trusted to them. Although, you know it's normally our process for Mr. Archibald and I, as well as the level director, to go out and visit with the staff when we know there's a principal vacancy, to garner feedback on the qualities and characteristics of their next leader. Although we did not have the opportunity to do that in person, I just want to acknowledge the thoughtful and detailed communication that the Johnson staff individually sent to us upon invitation to share with us information about the qualities and characteristics of their next leader. That was very instrumental for us in creating the profile of a leader for the school. As we take a look at that profile that's been built, we believe that Mrs. Wheeler matches that to a T. She has not only had the experience as a teacher for many, many years in our district, as a department chair, she was selected to go through the Aspiring Administrators Academy, and then was selected four years ago as assistant principal at Frost Middle School. During that time, she has been highly engaged with the students, with the staff, and with her administrative colleagues in her role, and will bring to Johnson not only that experience and that enthusiasm and that dedication, but also the knowledge of the community in which she's been serving for a number of years. Johnson Elementary, Frost Middle School, and of course Churchill High School. We are absolutely thrilled to bring forward this recommendation to you this evening and are excited about Mrs. Wheeler becoming the principal of Johnson Elementary School.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the appointment of elementary principal. Mrs. Bonifield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonifield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Congratulations.[636.12][636.12](APPLAUSE).
All right. I am going to be as brief as possible. However, I do have some thank yous that I really would like to extend. First of all, thank you to the board, to Superintendent Oquist and Assistant Superintendent Archibald for appointing me to the role of principal at Johnson Elementary. I'm both humbled and excited to go to Johnson Elementary. I'm really looking forward to collaborating with my new administrative partner, Tom, the parent, staff, and students in the fall. For the last several days, I have been just inundated with texts and emails and social media posts, and former Franklin students, Frost students, just an outpouring of support for wild congratulations, which is really nice. The Johnson staff has been so welcoming. I've received many, many emails from the Johnson staff already. There's several of them here tonight that came to support this appointment, so I can't wait, really, to get in and do the job there. I want to go ahead and thank some people that are here tonight with me. In the back, I have my very, very dear friend, Danielle Stabler. For 20 years, we have raised children together. She has definitely been my support person through thick and thin, so she's here tonight and very important to me. My daughter is here, Raquel. And if you know my children, they both went to Franklin High School, and they had to survive high school being known as Wheeler's Kids. So Raquel, if you were to talk to her and you were to close your eyes, you would think you were talking to me. She definitely inherited all my tenacity and my sass. That's her strong point. My son, Gage, is not here with us this evening. He fortunately got my dedication and my work ethic to a fault, so he is at work tonight. So that's why he is not here with us today. They are my biggest fans and my biggest supporters, so I love them very much and wanted to extend that. Thank you. Very, very quickly, I want to thank Dan Willenborg, who has always been a role model for me, a mentor for me as my secondary director, and my new director in elementary, Cindy Scott, whose first words to me were, "Are you as excited as I am?" And I am, just as excited as you are, Cindy. So that was a really nice phone call to take. Stephen Andrea, thank you so much for your confidence and support of me. The entire time that I've been an administrator, your leadership for the district is just so valuable. Thank you to every, all of the educators, central office personnel, that have supported me and worked with me for almost two decades here in Livonia. There are simply too many names. I can't name them all. They know how important they are to me, and they know who they are. Finally, over the past four years, my partner in crime, part of the dream team, Mr. Anthony Abate, he has a passion for education energy that rivals mine. And that's tough, because together we just generate the energy for that building. We have shared in the success of rebranding a building and creating a culture that supports the education and emotional and social well-being of every student that walks through the door at Frost. We have learned from each other, grown together as leaders, and challenged each other to become the best versions of ourselves. And while I will miss working with him every day, I do look forward to the opportunities that Johnson and Frost will create to benefit the students there. Just very, very quickly, it's amazing how many people it takes to educate and develop a person. I'm an example of that within the district, and I'm happy to be a part of that in this district. During my 18-year career in education, I have taught at both Franklin and Churchill, led at Frost, and now look forward to leading Johnson. My goals as an administrator have always focused on creating welcome and safe environments for students, and I think with my unique insight and experience within the Churchill Triad, that'll be a great benefit to the students and staff at Johnson. And I can't wait to roll up my sleeves and get to work. So thank you.
Excellent.[867.23][867.23](APPLAUSE).
Okay. And before we move any further, we're going to take a short recess to meet our folks. Thank you. We'll be back shortly.[874.32][874.32](MUSIC) Thank you, and we are back. And that moves us on to item 8B, Approval of Superintendent's Contract. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonifield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the employment contract for Superintendent Andrea Oquist. Further move that the President and Secretary of the Board of Education be authorized to sign Mrs. Oquist's employment contract.
Support.
I have a motion by Mrs. Bonifield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And it looks like I'm going to present this. We went over the provisions of the contract in the committee of the whole meeting, so I'm not going to reiterate them. I will just say that this is the three-year contract for the years 2019 through 2022. And as the board president, I'm recommending that we approve the contract. I don't think we could find a better superintendent to run this district. She certainly puts her heart and soul into it every day. As a board, we couldn't be happier with the job that you're doing. I think my sentiments would be echoed through cabinet, through the entire district. So my recommendation is we accept the, and approve the contract. Are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Frank?
Mrs. Burton couldn't be here, but I think she did lots of research, and I think that it bears noticing that we talked about the fact that Livonia is the seventh, between seven and 10, depending on enrollment, largest district in the state. And a couple of things, she did some research on it, and you are not the seventh, or the 10th highest-paid superintendent in the state. And so I think one of the things is, when we look at what we compensate Mrs. Oquist for, she does a phenomenal job for our district, and I think that everyone in the district and all of us agree. We have asked a lot of you, you've been in a position to do a lot of things, and you do it phenomenally. And so we want to thank you for that, but we also want to compensate you for that. And in terms of the superintendent pay scale, we appreciate where you are, and we want to show that, and we also want to make it competitive where we are as a district. And so we want to compensate you, but we also want to compensate the position of superintendent so that we always can keep you, but also plan and use the taxpayer money responsibly, be fiscally responsible, but make sure that we're planning for the future. So thank you for all that you do. And also, I think that we are taking care of our superintendent, but also using taxpayer money wisely. So I appreciate that from this board, that we are doing both, and I think that Oquist should do a phenomenal job. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonifield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of superintendent's contract. Mrs. Bonifield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonifield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That then takes us to item 8C, and this is for, just a notice to the board, no motion is required. Then we will go to item 8D, Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Georgie Costa, Carlton Green, Mary Murphy, Rachel Rodriguez, Judith Sinning, Edward Yee.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Bradford. Mr. Archibald? Mr. Did I say mister? It was a little like, you know, Neil Armstrong, it was supposed to be amen. It should have been Mrs. Frank.
No problem.
Mrs. Archibald, I mean, Mr. Archibald.
Tonight, we bring before you the names of six employees who are retiring with a combined 152 years of experience, or an average of 25.3 years. I'd like to offer my sincere congratulations to each of them, and ask that the board adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for their years of dedicated service to Livonia Public Schools. Again, adopt these resolutions in their honor.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Absolutely. Good luck.
Best wishes.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you.
And the resolutions of appreciation for employees who are retiring. Mrs. Bonifield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonifield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That takes us to item 8E, Sympathy Resolution. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached sympathy resolution for the family of Jacqueline Harris.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Jarvis, why don't you go ahead and read the resolution a few more, please?
Yes, I will. Sympathy Resolution, Jacqueline Harris. Whereas the Board of Education was saddened to hear of the untimely death of Jacqueline Harris, and whereas she was employed by the Livonia Public Schools School District as a transportation paraprofessional, beginning on October 2, 2012, and whereas she was consistently, she consistently demonstrated her outstanding dedication to students, parents, and staff, and whereas Jacqueline Harris will be profoundly missed by her students, colleagues, and the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District offers its deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Jacqueline Harris.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Questions or comments from the board? We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Jarvis, why don't you go ahead and read the resolution a few more, please?
Yes, I will. Sympathy Resolution, Jacqueline Harris. Whereas the Board of Education was saddened to hear of the untimely death of Jacqueline Harris, and whereas she was employed by the Livonia Public Schools School District as a transportation paraprofessional, beginning on October 2, 2012, and whereas she was consistently, she consistently demonstrated her outstanding dedication to students, parents, and staff, and whereas Jacqueline Harris will be profoundly missed by her students, colleagues, and the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District offers its deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Jacqueline Harris.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Questions or comments from the board? We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, to accept the sympathy resolution. Mrs. Bonifield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonifield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Mrs. Oquist?
President Johnson, on behalf of a grateful district, we share our deepest sympathy with the family of Mrs. Harris, and we will share this resolution along with a message from the Board of Education and our cabinet team with her family.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. Thank you, Mr. Archibald. You're done? That will take us to item 9A, First Reading of Board Policy. And this is Board Policy JGI, Suspected Abuse and Neglect. Dr. Terrell?
Good evening. As previously stated at the committee of the whole meeting, Board Policy JGI was recently updated in March of 2016, and today we are requesting a revision to this policy that will include the ability for mandated reporters to report suspected child abuse or neglect online. The Michigan Department of Education and the Department of Health and Human Services joined efforts in creating an online reporting site for mandated reporters for child abuse and/or neglect. So this would add that into our board policy for online reporting.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Questions or comments from the board? And these are just very simple amendments to the...
Correct. Just adding online into the policy.
Okay. If everybody's good with it, we'll put it on for a second reading at our August regular meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell.
That will move us to item 9B, Second Reading of Board Policy EBBC, Bomb Threats, Suspicious Devices, and Threats of Violence. Excuse me. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for Board Policy EBBCA, Bomb Threats, Suspicious Devices, and Threats of Violence.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And Mr. Francis, huh?
The Policy EBBCA, which was originally simply titled Bomb Threats, was researched and expanded to include, as the title indicates, not only the threat of a bomb, but any suspicious device found, or any type of threat of violence towards property or persons part of the school district. We did read, there was not very many changes to it. It's a brief policy to begin with, but you can see through the reading that it does have the addition of some language that adds suspicious device and threats of other violence to it. We did have a first reading previously, this is a second reading, and since it is so short, I think it just makes sense to read it again into the record, because it's not very lengthy. The Board of Education authorizes the administration to take precautions and steps as deemed necessary to respond to a bomb threat, a suspicious device, and/or other threats of violence against the district, its properties, or any of its occupants, to ensure the safety of all staff and students in the immediate and surrounding areas.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Bonifield?
I think this is pretty on the top of a lot of people's minds right now. So, and it is a very short policy, and I was wondering, maybe Mr. Francis or Mrs. Oquist, if one of you might talk a little bit just about policy versus administrative procedure, because this is one of those things, I believe, where the policy itself is very short, but the administrative procedure on how we handle these things is a much larger document, and maybe just a little bit about why it's set up like that and how that works. I don't want anybody to get the impression that we think that this is a two-sentence issue.
I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I'll cover it generally, and then if you'll just spend a few minutes, if you don't mind, on the procedures, that would be great, because you've spent a lot of time with Mr. Raymond on that. So just in general, for our practice, the board is responsible for reviewing and adopting policies specific to our school district based on applicable state and federal laws. And this is a perfect example of the policy being rather brief. Accompanying most of our policies are administrative procedures, which really deals with the day-to-day and the how the policy will be implemented. In this case, there were a number of changes made based on current practice, and Mr. Francis will go over that. Those administrative procedures are reviewed by members of our cabinet team and myself. They are then brought to the Board of Education for review, and the board provides input on that. The board is not required to vote on administrative procedures, only on the board policy. However, if anyone is ever interested in going back to take a listen to some of the administrative procedure revisions, that can be done by viewing our committee of the whole meetings or attending our study sessions. Mr. Francis?
Yeah, in the specific case of EBBCA, we have, as you know, administrator of public safety in the district, and he is a part of then the larger committee, which is the Safety Committee for the district, which is made up of folks from multiple buildings and different roles. So those, both that committee, that committee, members from the committee have attended via Wayne RISA, some safety-specific conferences based upon this topic. And Mr. Raymond specifically went to a national conference based upon, and it was like a three-day certification type of conference, where they discussed with first responders, and federal government actually sponsored it, the appropriate procedures that are occurring nationally. And there's also research base out of the University of Virginia that was shared at these conferences as well. So all of that in totality, from a district standpoint with regard to the committees, using Wayne County RISA, using national resources, using our specific public safety person, who is a former police officer and investigator. So we parlayed all that information to use research-based... So, we parlayed all that information to use research-based items to create a new procedure, administrative procedure, to go with EBBCA, that our staff, our administrative staff across the district have at hand. And we actually planned a little bit later this summer, when our staff comes back, when our administrative team comes back, to review that with them as well, because the policy is new, not changed a ton, because it's brief, but the procedures have changed significantly, so we'll be reviewing those, and not founding the procedures, but references, actually even a decision tree based upon research as to what to do if threats of violence occur, both large and small, in a school. So, we have quite a bit of background in our procedures that go along with this, it's just not in, as Mrs. Oakwist mentioned, not something that the Board votes on, but all of you have seen it, and for the public at home, we have a lengthy process that we went through, and again, research-based, supported by both local and federal law enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
You're welcome.
And I would also note, for anybody who's watching, even though this is a relatively short policy, there was a lot of discussion on the exact language to use. At our Committee of the Whole, we had a lot of different ideas, and finally, came to this language. So, although it is short in stature, it was more complicated than it looks on paper. So, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to adopt Board Policy EBBCA. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to Item 9C, Approval for Board Member to Take Classes During MASB Summer Institute Conference. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve that Board Trustee Crystal Frank may take four CBA classes at $90 each, offered by MASB during the Summer Institute Conference in Shanty Creek, and stay one night at the Shanty Creek Resort at $170, for a total cost of up to $530.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Mrs. Frank, for taking four classes.
Thank you.
Once again, expanding our knowledge and our education as board members.
It's a huge commitment.
It's what we do.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers, for the approval for a board member to take classes during MASB Summer Institute Conference. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Centers?
Yes.
I apologize. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you again, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you.
That takes us to Item 9D, Hearing from Board Members, and as has become customary, we open it up at the end of the meeting for any board members who may have something to say to the community, so, anyone who has anything tonight? Mrs. Jarvis.
I just wanted to recognize our recent graduate, Kristiana Benson, who will be honored at the Michigan PTA Convention in August as one of the winners of the Fran Anderson Scholarship.
Nice.
Outstanding, thank you.
That's nice.
Okay, anyone else this evening? Nothing? Wow. Okay, so we're at the, Mrs. Bradford?
I just want to remind our community to remember to vote on Tuesday, August 6, in the primary election, so hopefully, we can get a lot of people out there to vote for our two different sinking fund replacement and the operating millage renewal.
Both of those are on the agenda, or on the ballot?
Yes, they are, so.
Varyal primary.
And if you're not sure what they're all about, please ask one of us, or seek some, go on the website, there's so much information for that.
We're here to educate.
Exactly, remember to vote August 6.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments tonight? Seeing none, we're at the end of the agenda, is there any other business to be brought before the board tonight? Seeing none, then we are adjourned. Thank you for tuning in.
Thank you.[1791.12][1791.12](applause).